Mike, I know you haven't done much of anything with respect to athletics or the university over the last 90 days. I mean, my guy, you have a new president, you're obviously extremely involved with Purdue's sports with the hiring of a new football coach, a number one ranked basketball team. It's been a pretty exciting time.
It has been. It's been one of the busiest streak of consecutive days, I would say, starting in December.
Yeah.
Through maybe to where we are today that I've experienced since I've been involved at Purdue. And it's all been very good stuff, though, which is, which is much better than some of our peers, you know, who have that same kind of trouble, I mean, commitment on scheduling. But, you know, going from Mitch's transition out of office, we had a board meeting, we had Mitch Fest that lasted for a couple of weeks, then bringing Mung on, getting him all oriented. It was, it's, it's been a lot, but it's all been a privilege to be a part of.
Yeah, exciting time. We'll get into probably all of those topics in one form or another.
Sure.
I wanted to start about with Ryan Walters, obviously the hiring of him in December, transition from Jeff Brom. You, as, as you were in the Brom hire, involved, very involved in that process with Mike Bobinski and company in the interview process. You've interviewed a lot of guy, a lot of people in your life professionally, and you know it when you see it. But what was that, what was, what was the secret sauce? Or what was that impression that Ryan Walters made on you that, that really kind of tipped the scales in his favor from your perspective?
First thing I want to do is acknowledge the significance of having Mike Bobinski in the seat he's in right now. This guy just has a real knack for identifying talent. He's done it his whole career. I mean, most of, most of our listeners know his, his career Xavier and the basketball coaches he's hired. And he was, you know, he was quick to identify Jeff early on in that search process. And I remember he went on the first round of interviews by himself. And because they were, you know, they were folks who were probably in the second tier, and Jeff was one of them.
Yeah.
And he came back from that meeting and I said, hey, was there anybody? I didn't go on that round because I'm waiting for, you know, to go higher.
Sure.
You know, steal somebody. Alabama's had Nick Saban. So he came back and he said, hey, this is a guy I really like. And he recapped Jeff's reasons why Jeff was so appealing. And, you know, he was, he was on target there for sure. That proved out. We went from a pretty bad spot to playing for the Big Ten Division, West Division. Same thing here with Ryan. We had about an inventory of 15 coaches, you know, that you just kind of keep on your top of your desk. You never know what's going to happen. And he was quick to settle in on a couple, two or three. And those were the interviews that I sat in personally. One of which being with Ryan out at Mount Comfort Airport in, at I-70 and Oleo Road. He drove over campus. And Mike and Tiffany and I and our agent Chad sat down with Ryan. And what impressed me most is his level of preparation. And that's kind of how he started. Actually, the way he started, he told his life story.
Yeah.
And that got my attention. Most, everybody's heard about his parents being 16 years old when they had Ryan as a baby and somehow managed to become parents and, and career folks, you know, at ages that most of our listeners, you know, couldn't do today.
Yeah.
At 16. They're still together. His dad has a great job. And, and so that life story, I think, fits with Boilermakers, you know. Don't, not many of us come from significant means and find great ways to take advantage of the gifts that God gave us all and make the most out of them. And that was one thing that attracted me to Ryan. Then he walked through his career. I loved his Power Five experience.
Yeah.
You know, at least finally just five, five places. I liked how he got promoted along the way, both in a job that, at a, at a school where he started, and he'd made a couple of promotions, and he went to another Power Five school at a higher level, got a promotion. And that was impressive. That sends a signal. And he'd been a part of programs that struggled too.
Yeah.
So he'd seen a lot of it. But then he was fully prepared, fully prepared. He had a packet of information. He had an organizational chart. It was pretty comprehensive, that had names in every box, and he had backups in every box. And he explained to, to the four of us exactly why they were in that box, and what he wants out of them, and what they're responsible for delivering. And if this person isn't available when we want them, here's the next person they're gone. And here's what we give up, but here's what we get. And he went through that and had a plan. And then there were, the, the other thing is, very confident, but, but humble, high energy guy. You could tell he was ready to get started. And he, it was obvious early on that he really wanted the job. I, I love that we have a coach who says his first big time head coaching job. That's also the thing I didn't like about it, you know, because it's risky.
Yeah.
But here's a guy who's hungry, ready to go, and made it just a really incredible impression on me.
You know, when you look at that list, and maybe you can't recall exactly, but was he close, he's named his staff, has now come out officially. Were there a lot of guys on that first list that you recall? And that may be an unfair question to have you.
Yeah, no. Higher than average, much higher than average, major league batting average.
Yeah.
In fact, I can only think of, there were a number that he was, you know, as you move down the chain, there were a number that he was less certain on because, one, there, 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 there are a lot of moving parts at that level in coaching. And then, secondly, he was focusing on, on the key positions. But it was a very high batting average.
When you look at guys like that, and you, and you mentioned it, and it's, it's, it's obvious that it's, it's a challenge because he's never been in this position. But when you look at the, and even through your professional life, when you look for somebody that's going to be making that leap, is there, is there something that you look at them and say, yeah, boy, I'm going to bet that this guy can do it. Obviously, you guys are betting that he can do it and, and be, be the head coach in this position. But what, what is in there that tells you, boy, is it the organizational abilities? Is it the intellectual ability? What do you, what do you put the biggest precedent on?
You know, it's, for me, it's some of the foundational characteristics that matter less than how, how many hours their butt has been in the seat.
Yeah.
It's really helpful, but it's, I'd rather have the financial or the foundational characteristics build a platform for success and have limited experience at the top than be questioning their foundational base and banking on the results. Because sometimes results without the foundational base occur because of external factors. But when you see somebody that has a formula, a God-given formula, that has proven itself over and over, I felt, I feel really confident about that. If you got a minute, just for one example, one of the, one of the methods I have for hiring employees, people who, at our company, is student athletes tend to produce great, great hires. Because, one, they know teamwork, they're goal-oriented, they handle adversity, and they're persistent. And they're tough to, tough to, tough to knock off course. And they're eager to win, you know, in the end. And so, you know, we hire, our hit, our hitting rate at the company is very high. You hire them, they don't, they've never been in a job before.
Hmm.
But they, they end up succeeding. We just, we just hired two folks from Purdue, a young lady who was a soccer player and a young man who was a pitcher in baseball. And their, their first year has been phenomenal.
Yeah, interesting. And it's a, there's a lot to that whole thing of 99% of them go, go into professional, a profession other than, than the professional sports.
Right.
Part of that, part of that upbringing. And certainly Ryan, the thing that's impressive also about him is that intent, that, that confidence, but also the intellectual ability. I watched the interview, he had done a Big Ten Network with Urban Meyer talking about defense. But his detail is, and his, you know, being able to break down film for somebody like me on the defensive side was impressive. I mean, is he, do you feel like he's also can, not that you have to dumb it down for your players, but you've got to make it relatable. And is that, what do you think, one of his key attributes as well?
On the, on the defensive side of your talk?
Yeah, or just, just the way he, he, he provides information to people he's going to have to do that with.
Yeah, I think most of, most of y'all saw in the press conference who were watching that there's something, something there about the way Ryan communicates.
Right.
He strikes a nice balance between being very knowledgeable. It's very clear he's very knowledgeable. But also being able to explain it in a way that everybody understands, which is a tremendous skill to have if you're leading a group of 100 young men and a, and a big staff to communicate what it is he expects of them, and what, what is in the program, and what is, what's, what's the offense all about, what's the defense all about. That's something else that came out both in the interview and then later got confirmed in subsequent meetings with him, including that press conference. I thought that was, yeah, really, really, really great. You know, and, and he's tuned in. You know, you saw how he, he reached out to former era players, you know, a nod of the hat to Coach Tiller.
Yeah.
And, you know, recognized prior years and bringing the family together, and just really talented that way. I think a lot of that's going to translate out on the field communication wise and so on.
Yeah, first thing he said in the press conference, you know, basically, got out to more players like yourself, you know, that's, that's, that I think really, I know resonated with folks that I was able to speak with from, and I think that makes a big difference when you look at the, look at the grand scheme. All right, when you look at the challenges ahead, obviously, you know, Jeff Brom did a lot of great things to bring fans back in the stands, have, have an exciting brand of football. You know, you, you, you played at this level and looked at it from a, you were a defensive guy, you've got a defensive guy in this situation, but he certainly seems to, from the hiring standpoint with Graham Harrell on down the line, exciting, fast-paced, big-time scoring football is still part of Purdue's quarterback-driven legacy. And certainly, that seems to me like it's something he's going to continue to bring to the table.
Yeah, every action he's taken would reinforce that he recognizes the risk of his defensive, his defensive DNA.
Yeah.
Perhaps overshadowing the need to score points.
Yeah.
I know it seems a lot of times that mistake is, is made, you know, but I, there's been no action he's taken that would suggest he doesn't recognize, which should be pretty easy to recognize, the importance of scoring points in general, but especially at Purdue.
Yeah. All right, your other, your other busy December, and it obviously been going on for, for a while. It's been going on for 10 years, and that, of course, being the, the legacy and the, the time, life and times of Mitch Daniels at Purdue. Well, he's moved on, and yet, you brought in, the, the board brought in Meng Chang, and will be a, he's already made an impression on athletics with his appearance in Mack Arena last Sunday in a
Yeah.
large standing ovation. But tell us what, what we might expect, not only from a personality, but his, his view towards athletics and, and how you see that continuing to evolve during his tenure at West Lafayette.
Yeah, first of all, just, it's just been a real honor and a privilege, I think, to be associated with Mitch the last decade. And, and our fans and our alumni and the people who are close to Purdue have been so generous about, you know, sharing with Mitch how much he's meant to the university. He truly has transformed the place to be a nationally relevant public university. And Mitch is the reason Mung came to Purdue. He got the offer to be the college, or the dean of the College of Engineering, opened it up, signed it, put it back in the FedEx envelope, ran off to the post office, sent it back, went home, told his wife Kay that he accepted the job as dean of engineering at Purdue. And she wanted to know, well, how much are you going to get paid? He said, I have no idea. I just want to work for Mitch, Mitch Daniel.
Yeah.
And he proved that all the five years he was on campus as the dean. We got basically a five-year interview of the guy to consider for president. We have very, we had a couple of other very qualified people at the university who could have been president at Purdue and are qualified to be president at other places. And if that's what they want to do, I hope they do. But we settled on Mung, mostly because he's the right guy for Purdue at the right time. Tech-oriented, the world's demanding tech. He comes from a tech background. He's a businessman. He was a New Jersey CEO of the year because of his couple of startups all in tech. And it's pretty obvious that that's where the industry's going right now. What he cares about is being the best at everything, and he cares about winning.
Yeah.
He wants the best College of Engineering, wants it to be big, best and the biggest at scale. He's, he's going to expect that of all the other colleges. Some are, some are great already, but he wants to be the best. And guess what? He doesn't know that much about sports. It's Chinese-American sports, you know, his history has been, has taken such a unique route, you know. But he, he knows one thing, if you're going to participate, we want to be the best. And there are some things that he's already deferred to the board and members of the board and, and deferred to me that, you know, all it says is, I know you guys know what's required. I'm going to be supportive. If it enhances the reputation of the university and it gets us to the, to spot where it's the best, we're, let's go for it. And I, I have, I have no concerns about his level of support for Purdue athletics. I, people are gonna, people are gonna see how committed he can be. In fact, he was a, probably, it's the first time in, since I've been on the board, which is a little over 10 years, he, he invited all the head coaches over to Westwood for dinner Tuesday night.
Hmm.
And it's the first time, at least Dave Chondell said it's the first time it's happened since he's been there. So he's cultivating the connections that are required to make sure that Purdue University does everything to, to make our athletic department and teams as, as top of the Big Ten.
And in your 10-plus years on the board, and I know you can't speak for everybody on the board, but you are one member, but you, in your role as chair, alignment is just, you've talked about that a lot publicly. Mike Bobinski's talked about that. My guess is longer Ryan Walters is here, he'll talk about that as well. Just the importance of that. I mean, you, and alignment being from the board to the athletic director, to the president of the university. You've seen that evolve in your time. I mean, it may, you know, it's been a process to be able to get to that level maybe. But to tell us why that really is, is absolutely essential if you're going to do what you want to do in athletics?
Well, if you look at it from the coach's perspective, there are, are a lot of folks who can get in your way when it comes to Division One university athletics. It could be rogue members of the board. It could be the leadership, the academic leadership could get in the way. It could be, you know, fans can be problematic sometime. And so, you know, I think part of it is because a lot, the majority of the folks on the board come from a business background. They know that, that what works the best is picking the right leader and providing them the resources they need, the support they need, the advice they need, but letting them handle all the execution. I have nothing to offer Ryan.
Yeah.
From a X's and O's standpoint, right? But I can make things available to him that make him more successful. Things that help in recruiting, getting his coaches out on the road in ways that's convenient for the coaches to make five stops instead of one stop. You know, just, just really the, the simpler things that can drag somebody down. But if you get out of the way and provide him the support, it allows him, it allows him to, to be a rocket ship and really kicks a butt.
Yeah, he's going to have that, have that challenge and that opportunity, already working at it really hard with the signing day next week, but the transfer portal and everything else.
Yeah.
It's a 365-day-a-year job. All right, I want to ask you a little bit about that excellence you're talking about. And of course, men's basketball ranked number one. Mack Arena's an extremely special environment. It will be on Sunday when Michigan State comes to town. There's some special things going on on that day as well. But just talk about, again, you've, you've been around a long time. You've seen Mack Arena's always been a great place, even back to your college days. But it seems to be the new level, and Matt Painter and company seem to have this program. It's never on autopilot, but it certainly is a situation where it has every opportunity to, to achieve at the highest level.
Well, that's for sure. Matt's stayed true to himself and his commitment to what it takes to win, what his formula is. You know, his formula adapts over time, but it's, it's his formula, you know. And when you look at the success we've had, he's, you know, he's proven that he and his staff, which has been pretty consistent,
Yeah.
know what it takes to win. And, you know, we, you know, it wasn't too long ago where we had a couple bumpy years.
Yeah.
You know, and I think the university and the leadership at the time treated that the way it should have been, temporary.
Yeah.
And realized it's temporary. Didn't, didn't go off the rails because we knew we had great leadership. We had a good direction. And that, that's, that's what Matt brought. And, you know, now for the last six, eight years, 10 years, those have paid dividends. And I think the future's looking really bright. And we're going to go to the Final Four, and we're going to win a national championship with this guy. And that's, that's, that's what's going to happen.
I'm with you. I think, I think he's got, he's got every, every, every piece is in place. And you talk about a guy that puts foundation first and, and has process that quietly works, that certainly is in that situation. All right, the wonderful world
You know, our fans, our, our fans have a lot to do with that, too, at Mack Arena. I mean, you look around the league, you watch Big Ten games on other, you know, on the Big Ten Network, and you look at the stands, and they're not that bad of a team, but there's empty seats in the lower level, there's empty seats at mid-level. And, you know, our, our games in December where the students weren't there were sold out, they're packed, they're loud. Every announcer talks about it. It's quite an environment.
Yeah, it really is. And as, yeah, when you think about the New Orleans and Florida A&amp;M games.
Yeah.
Shoulder to shoulder. And I think that's right, because it used to be, you would have that game, and it might still have great crowds back in the day, but it was always more subdued. And you could tell, for some reason, some reason, either these, there's a lot of the former paint crew members that are coming to these games, but it's still loud in there for those games. And that, I think, is, is a significant change over the last five to 10 years that I've noticed that even been more of that. All right, I mentioned, you know, just navigating the world of college sports and being able to put it in perspective in a higher education situation. NIL is, you can go on for hours about that. It is here. It is what it is. It is an important part of how potential and prospect, perspective, and also current student athletes look at their experience. Transfer portal makes it very, makes a lot of flexibility for these student athletes. How are you, not necessarily sleeping at night, but how are you digesting all this, looking at this from a higher ed perspective?
Well, a lot, a lot changed in a hurry.
Yeah.
And so it's taken a, it's taken some time to, for us all to accommodate the changes and, you know, in the legislature, you know, the NCAA's, and plus, by the way, we've got a new NCAA president coming. We're going to have a new Big Ten commissioner. The whole NIL thing's fairly new. The expansion of the portal flexibility is new. It's a lot to, it's a lot to deal with. But these are tools that are, coaches can use to their advantage, too. And ideally, we find the lane that benefits the student athletes in a way that they should be benefited, but doesn't, doesn't get in the way of the primary purpose of them being getting an education, competing at the highest level for championships and winning some championships, and then getting opportunities to do something after their collegiate career, whether it be in sports or, or in their academic pursuit. And finding that avenue is important. I'd like, so, so let's start just quickly with the NIL. I want everybody to understand that university supports and athletics supports the need for NIL support of our student athletes. And I want to encourage our donors to give to the Boilermaker Alliance, because our coaches need this tool to compete against our competitors. And we're doing it in the right way. We don't have time to talk about the nuances of how we're doing it. But I, but if, if you want to look it up, Boilermaker Alliance's, their website explains what the avenue is. And we need, we need to have that group fully funded to provide our players an opportunity to be student athletes, go to school and have some cash so they can, they can live, you know, a, a life that's similar to some of our other students. And nothing out of, nothing out, you know, exuberant, but something that allows us to compete. The portal is a whole different thing. I mean, you know, certainly the student athlete should have an opportunity to move to a place, especially like, you know, when a coach didn't make a change. But what's difficult is the number, number of student athletes who are applying into the portal at once. I mean, I think it's almost like a third of the students. That really makes it rough. So I think the thing we need to focus on is just making it painfully hard to leave our place. You know, to create such an opportunity for our student athletes, there's no way they would go somewhere else. You know, unless they're in the wrong place. You know, maybe they can't compete at this level or something. But that's, that's the only way I know how to compete against the, you know, the downside of the portals, create something really special at Purdue Athletics.
Does, you know, and we talk about the Boilermaker Alliance, and we've hit that a lot on our site with, with Jeff McKean and company. You've obviously an Indianapolis area business person that, that has, deals with a lot of support from that area. And it, and it is an important part of that, you know, you're going to need financial support. How do you, how do you balance, I asked Mike Bobinski the same question, in, in the grand screen, scheme of fundraising, where you have a lot of projects that you still want to get done, but you also have, you know, this new, relatively new thing of funding at, college athletes. How do you see that balancing out over the next period of time? Is this going to still continue to evolve in terms of how, how donors spend their money and/or donate to the university also to the, to the alliance?
Yeah, I think if you have a broad base of donors coming from all sorts of different backgrounds and income levels, what you, what we're going to find is we, is donor level that has capacity to give both to the NIL and to the university, because they have the resources to do that. Some of them aren't doing it now because the NIL never existed. And so we got to find a way to communicate to them that not only does the university think it's a good idea, they support doing it. And we want them to give to both, much like you would at it. Maybe you go to church and you put money in the basket every Sunday, but now they want to build a school or add a new building. Somehow you find a way to help with capital campaign and continue to do your type. Okay, that's what we're talking about. But then you've got another donor base of level that maybe doesn't have as much fluid income. And they're going to have to make a choice, and that's okay. Because if we have a large enough pool to draw from, the amounts we're talking about, while they're significant and they're important, we can meet, we can meet the obligations that we think we need to meet to be on the NIL, NIL side, to be competitive, and to make sure that the university's side of the athletic department flourishes as well.
All right, and we've already, we've already gone over my, the time I told you we would spend this, but I appreciate your time. One last question on facilities. Obviously, a lot going on, not only the Sam Allen golf facility that's going to be on Cherry Lane, which will be spectacular, but as it pertains to football, a lot going on in Ross Aide Stadium in and around Ross Aide Stadium. How do you, you know, you, your, your job as board members and working with athletics is to fly the jet, look five, 10 years down the road. Are we reaching now a point where, where we're getting to where, where you want to be from a facility standpoint? Is this just an ever-evolving, arms race is too harsh of a word, but a challenge to be able to, to keep up with the, the programs that you want to keep up with?
I think we got stalled for a couple of years because of COVID. We're back on track. Both the Phase One and Phase Two at Ross Aide are going to make a big difference. And we're going to create an environment, that Ross continued to create an environment that Ross Aide that rewards our, rewards our fans for being as, as, as loyal as they have, have been, because that stadium was filled up.
Yeah.
But it's old.
Yeah.
And so we're going to improve it. We're going to enhance it. And there'll be other, there'll be other phases. There'll be some continuous improvement. But after Phase One and Phase Two, it's going to be a much better place. And then we'll, then we'll continue on some fine tuning.
Yeah, lots still to happen with that. And that will be an interesting storyline to, to watch. Mike, thanks so much for your time. It always is interesting. You're always very forthcoming on your, on your thoughts. And, and if you go back and look at the old interviews, he's, he's been right just about every time. So that's, that's a good thing from that standpoint. So we appreciate your time and safe travels when you get to back. You have to make the trek time and again from Indianapolis area up to Lafayette for, for, for basketball, but also for university business. And we appreciate your services.
I want to just recognize one of our donors, Bruce White, who passed away
Yeah.
a couple of weeks. The guy was an incredible sports fan, friend of Mike Steele's and, and who you're going to have in next week or so. Huge basketball fan. I think will, has become the university I think will, has become the university's largest donor in history. And there's going to be a, a video, I think after the first media timeout at the basketball game honoring Bruce and he deserves it.
Yes, and, uh, uh, he supporter of Golden Black as well and a guy that was very, very passionate about. Uh, not only, not only Purdue sports, but obviously the university as a whole and a guy that, uh, could talk the talk. That was for sure. We had some great conversations about, uh, the nuts and bolts of what was going on in, in, in Purdue sports. And that I enjoyed. That was privileged to have that opportunity. Well said, Mike. Thanks so much again and.